Good evening, everyone. Tonight's forum is for candidates for the Waukam County Council. There are two districts and an at-large seat on ballots this fall. Each seat has two candidates. For District Four, I'd like to introduce Kathy Kerschner. Mark Stremler is also running for District Four, but let us know late yesterday that he could not be here tonight because he had an unforeseen event for the same evening. Candidates for District Five are Jackie Dexter and Ben Allenboss. At-large candidates are John Scanlon and Hannah Ordos. The Waukam County Council is the legislative branch of Waukam County government. The county council is comprised of seven members. One member is elected from each of the five county council districts, and two members are elected as the countywide at-large representatives. The county council exercises its legislative power by adoption and enactment of ordinances and resolutions. Waukam County council members serve four-year terms. We will follow the following specific rules for this debate. There will be no opening statements tonight. Instead, the introductory question is tailored to illicit responses consistent with an opening statement. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question, and we'll make a one-minute closing statement. The order of questions and closing statements is alphabetical by seat. The order is rotated for each question. Each candidate has a challenge card, so candidates, hold up your challenge cards. Okay, great, you all have one. All right, so candidates may use this card to challenge, except for you Kathy, or rebut their opponent's response. The challenging candidate will have 30 seconds to state the challenge, and their opponent will have 30 seconds to respond to the challenge. Each of you may only use your challenge card one time. So we have two timers behind me, Michelle Kopcha and Carol Como, and they will be tracking the time. So the timers will flash a yellow sign when there's 15 seconds remaining. Okay, and a red sign to signal that your time is up. If you continue to talk, a bell will ring, and that means stop. We ask that the candidates be respectful of the time allotted due to the limited amount of time that we have and our desire to include as many questions for you as possible. So now I have some directions to the audience, which I will try to face you and talk into the microphone at the same time. I'd like to remind the audience to hold your applause until the conclusion of the forum, and we encourage members of the audience to provide written questions for the candidates. These questions will be asked of all the candidates. Ushers are available to pick up your questions. Ushers, raise your hand and bring them to the screeners at the table on my right, and the screener is Kirsten Barron. Questions will be screened for legibility and clarity and to avoid duplication. So with the rules covered, let's get started. Timers, are you ready? Okay. So at this time, you, the audience, you are welcome to submit your questions. Candidates, you will have one and a half minutes to respond to the question, and the first question is, what legislation would you make a personal priority to get passed, and why? So we're going to start with candidate Kerschner.
All right, I'm Councilmember Kerschner, and I would like to say that the most important piece of legislation that I would work on and have worked on to get passed is the ordinance put before voters in November for a new jail, along with behavioral health center, and the 15 other items in the implementation plan that the council passed. I think that it is crucially important that our community address that issue. We have been kicking that can down the road for far too long. We have an ordinance that both Democrats, Republicans, and everybody in between worked on, and we came to lots of compromises. It's not perfect for anybody, but it's perfect for our community. It's a cost-effective solution. I've been working on the Yes Healthy, Safe Jail, Healthy Outcomes campaign to make sure that our community knows that we need a new jail, and we need behavioral health services, and we need it now. The jail we have now is falling down, and it's costing us more to maintain and repair it than we should be paying. It's good money after bad, and there are so many improvements in how we can do correctional work with our community. So I encourage and ask our community to please get behind that and vote yes on that issue on the ballot this November.
Okay, thank you. So candidate Dexter, your response, please.
I am a big supporter of the initiatives, one and two, that are proposed for the November ballot, and I want to help with the housing, and those initiatives that are proposed are really going to help with the housing affordability and the homelessness. There are many onion layers to the, there are many peels to the onion, and we're going to have to work really, really, really hard, and those initiatives are just the very beginning. We need to protect the renters, we need to raise the minimum wage, but this also needs to extend further out into the county, and I hope that initiatives can follow up later, especially if I'm elected, where we can get those services provided to the rural neighborhoods of the coastal district five.
Okay, thank you. So candidate Ellenboss, your response, please.
So since we've already got the ordinance in place for the jail, and it's up to the voters to decide, I'll skip over that one. I would, I would like to see legislation in place that puts a policy book in front of planning and development services so that their internal policies are set such that people have certainty in their permitting. And I think if we could do this, it would, it would help with a myriad of issues that we face in the county, from affordable housing to living wage jobs. Unfortunately, a lot of folks don't get the same answer when they go to the permitting desk, and I feel that businesses that are looking to invest in Waukam County have no certainty in the outcome of their permits because our planning and development services are, are shooting from the hip, so to speak, with which, which issues they decide that they're going to enforce or bring forward or make a priority based off of their own personal types of, of thought process.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Ordos, your response, please.
Well, thank you for the question, I really appreciate, oh, okay, so I appreciate the question, thank you so much. You know, one of the things that's near and dear to me is public safety, and I know that that looks different for everyone based on how it affects you. We all should feel safe in the places where we work and we live and we play. So the ordinance that's on the ballot in November is one actually that's important to me as well. I'm going to get this right, I promise, mostly because it has a component for behavioral health and wellness. Sorry. I think that that's something we need to start building the infrastructure for behavioral health and wellness. My experience on the North Sound Behavioral Health Advisory Board, we talk about the importance of having that as well as the services there, and I think the ordinance that's coming in November will give us a good starting point for that.
Thank you. Candidate Scanlon, your, your response, please.
Thank you for the question. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Scanlon, I'm running for Waukam County Council at Large. Thank you for the folks who are here in person tonight and those watching online live, and who'll be watching maybe in a few weeks as they make their choices for the election this year. My priority would be healthcare. I'm the son of a nurse and the husband of a doctor. I've worked on public health policy throughout my career, and I've had numerous conversations with leaders, with folks in our county about the healthcare gaps that we have in our county. A few months back, I sat down in Nook Sak City Hall with Mayor Kevin Hester, talking about how he's had trouble bringing family practice back to his community, which has been lost, and some of those projects hasn't, haven't been able to pencil out. I've had similar conversations with Councilmember Barry Buchanan, who's endorsed me, who's been trying to bring healthcare to East County, and a lot of these projects haven't penciled out. We know we have so many gaps in our healthcare system in the county from having just one major provider, one hospital in our county. This is something that's been an issue for League of Women Voters that you all have studied over the past few years. So I'd like to take a studies, take an assessment of our healthcare needs and gaps in our county, and then look at what are the, the things that we can do as a county to fill those needs and gaps. There's so much to do, from fentanyl crisis that we have in our county, behavioral health, substance use treatment, some of those things will be funded by the initiative this fall if it passes with the voters, which I support, and there are other gaps in our community that we need as well.
Okay, thank you. So here's question number two, and it's, it's a bit long, so if you need me to repeat it, feel free to ask. We saw water supply issues in our county this summer when three public wells went dry. Water supply, water rights, and water quality will likely continue to be countywide concerns in the future. What actions would you recommend county government take to ensure a safe, reliable, and adequate water supply for all uses in Waukam County, especially during the summer months when demand is at its peak? So we'll start with candidate Ellenboss. Your response, please.
Yeah, I think the first thing I would do is make sure that we're looking at real science and not political science when we're discussing this issue. I've felt, I, I've seen that if a developer goes to plant, you know, the government, Planning and Development Services, and says, "I have a wetland delineation from five years ago," they've been told, "Well, you need to have one newer than that, you need it updated." We're currently dealing with in-stream flow data from 1982 or 1985, and somehow that's okay. If we don't have enough water in Waukam County for agriculture, rural living, cities, and a harvestable salmon population, where in the world do we have enough water? I don't believe that we have a water issue. We may have a distribution issue, we may have a high-flow, low-flow time, but there are absolutely solutions that we can come to that are going to take people coming to the table. I know that my work on the Farm Bureau, we have been there at the table, ready to negotiate. Cattlemen's are at the table, ready to negotiate. I even think that Waukam County as a government is ready to negotiate, but not all parties have been at the table, and until we're all at the table and we're ready to work on it together and leave politics aside and come up with real solutions, we're not going to get anywhere and we're going to end up in court.
Okay, thank you. So candidate Dexter, your response, please.
First, I want to note that I support the adjudication process by the Department of Ecology. We need to first determine where the water is being drawn from and how we can best allocate it. When I attended Bellingham Technical College and the Fishery School, one of the first things that I learned is fish need water, so I would like to see first that, I mean, the ecological needs of the Nook Sak River watershed basin, and then allocate the, the water therefore to the, the farmers, the families, and the forests. To continue on the water quality, I actually volunteer with a weekly group every week in northern Waukam County to help monitor water quality in the Drayton Harbor area and the Birch Bay communities, and I will continue to do that as being a person in the boots and on the ground doing the data collection. I also have some novel thoughts about how to work with Public Works and the PUD, and maybe we can establish some reservoirs, rain catchment systems, and other ways to properly store the water during times of deluge so that we have them ready for times of drought. This is going to be a real issue in the future. I've driven over the Nook Sak River recently, and I've seen log jams in the middle of the stream, and that is concerning to me. I am an aquaculturist, and water quality and water availability will always be a four-point and a, a major concern of mine of my career and as a public official. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Scanlon, your response, please.
Thank you. So as you outlined with the question, we have a lot of issues with water supply, water rights, and water quality in our county, and we do have processes in place for these things where we can sort this out. One that was mentioned earlier is adjudication. I also support the adjudication process, and this is a way for us to sort out those water rights, which are currently unclear in our county, and is that if we, if we can sort those out, then we can figure out a lot of the things that need to be done across our county, from managing the Nook Sak River basin, to make sure we have enough water in the summertime for fish, to make sure that in the wintertime, we're managing the river when it comes to flooding. Also, when it comes to the Lake Waukam Basin, that's another area of concern, and I think we need great partnership between Waukam County, City of Bellingham, and the Water and Sewer districts in the area, and also with the state, given all the state land management that occurs in the Lake Waukam watershed. I support continuing land acquisition within the watershed of Lake Waukam so that we can protect that watershed. The best way to have water that is drinkable for our county and for citizens is to make sure that the watershed is forested, and that is the best thing for having clear cold water that's, that's easier to treat and less costly for taxpayers. So there's so much to be done, and the other process is our, our comprehensive plan update. As we go through our comprehensive plan update, that's a great process for us to make sure we're planning for the future, and I'm glad the county has started on that.
Thank you. Candidate Ordos, your response, and it won't pop if you sit, if you sit back a bit from the microphone.
I'll do better projection. Okay, here we go. Thank you for that question. I think we all can agree that water quality is important. It's important to us as humans, it's important to our habitat, and we've, we've spent a lot of time, effort, and resources in management plans and different programs. We have lots of local programs that address these very issues. One of the things that I would like to see more of is amplifying these programs. A couple, just a few months back, I volunteered with Waukam Cities End, and a group of us went around downtown Bellingham, and we picked up litter. We had plastics and foil and garbage, and we even found needles. So in the course of just a few hours, we picked six contractor bags full of garbage. Those are things that we can do as a community, we can have great community involvement, and that much garbage, I think, once a good rain hits, if we can prevent that from going in our stormwater drains and hitting our water supply, we've done some things that are of immediate impact at low cost to our community.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Kerschner, your response, please.
We've heard a lot of good ideas up here. I appreciate all of the candidates and what they've said, and some of those things I'll repeat. I think that in order to solve these complex problems that we have in water availability is one of them, either too much in the winter or too little in the summer when our farmers need it and our fish need it, we need to be building relationships, building trust, solving problems together. I think that an approach to store water is a good idea. I know that the City of Linden is currently exploring that idea in order to meet the requirements through the adjudication process and beyond, storing water for commercially, for use of the citizens in Linden. We need to continue to have creative solutions. As chair of the Public Works Committee on the Council, I've worked with our Public Works Department, our River and Flood Management Team, Gary Stoica and Paula, on the processes that they're using to bring community together. There's over 100 members that are currently involved in what's called a flip process to look at the river and the flooding issue and find creative solutions to store that water, reroute it. I'm in favor of adjudication, but I'm also in favor of settlement, so if we can figure out a way to expedite and make sure that we alleviate the fears of our farmers, our natives, and make sure we have enough water for fish and farming, that'd be great, and I'm done.
Thank you. Question number three. Waukam County residents have twice rejected a jail tax to construct a new jail. If this next tax, jail tax is rejected, what measures would you advance to address issues with the current jail? And we'll start with candidate Ordos.
Thank you for that question. You know, I hope the ordinance does pass, but if it doesn't, we already have to start thinking about, first of all, how do we take a non-functioner, almost non-functioning jail that's inhumane for the people who are there and the people that work there, and figure out who can be removed from that location? So do we have non-staff individuals who can perhaps be relocated? Then we need to take a good, hard look about how to remediate the mold issues that could be, they've had mold issues in the past, they likely are having mold issues currently, and what types of investments are we going to have to make into keeping it functioning while we figure out another alternative? I took a jail tour earlier this year, and, and it was worse than the videos that, that were on YouTube. The conditions were unimaginable, so you'd have to be there to, to experience that. So I think that if it doesn't pass, we need to get to work again to find another solution and come back to the table.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Scanlon, your response, please.
Well, I hope we don't end up in that situation. I'd like to see the initiative pass, and then we can start to go ahead and implement it. But if it doesn't pass, then I think we need to go back to the, the table and figure out how do we build a coalition for the initiative to pass. 2024 would be a good year. It's a presidential election year, a lot more people vote. So the priority I had earlier about going to healthcare, I would make this my priority so that we can get it back on the ballot, build a coalition that can come in front of voters, that can pass. I think a lot of the elements are there. Our current facility is not doing the best job for people who work there and people that spend time there, and we need those behavioral health dollars that will come in through this initiative, and we need the substance use treatment dollars that'll come in through this initiative that'll help us to put together the implementation plan. So in that meantime, we can still pursue all of the criminal justice reform initiatives that have been out there in our community going back to 2017. I'd like to advocate with the legislature about changing up things like cash bail reform so that we get rid of some of the inequality that we have within our system. I'd like to work with the new Racial Equity Commission to look at the racial equities that we have in our jail, in our current criminal justice system. I'd also like to make sure that Waukam County is living up to its constitutional right to provide counsel to folks, which we haven't always been able to do as a county in this past year. So there's a lot that we can do, including, you know, I think there's some things we can fix up from the mold and the paint and all that as well.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Kerschner, your response, please.
The current jail is a huge financial liability, and it would be irresponsible to the taxpayers to continue to use it. So if it does not pass, if the ballot measure in November does not pass, I think we need to look at condemning the jail and finding alternative sites for folks that we would put in jail. I can't imagine allowing our corrections deputies to work in that facility for one more day longer than they'd need to. That'll be more costly to taxpayers to find alternative sites. That means shipping people to a different community. It'll be more costly to service the justice that they deserve in our court system and with their attorneys, but holding people in a jail that is in the condition that ours is currently in is irresponsible, and I would not support that.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Dexter, your response, please.
Yeah, if the initiative did not pass for the new jail, much like what John said, as I would be trying to put that forth on the 2024 ballot and keep getting that on the ballot ticket and get passed, I'm in reluctantly support of the new jail because it is an unsafe, inhumane, unhealthy place for the people that are sitting there and the people that are working there. It's just not humane for us to do that. And if it does not pass, I would inform the, the voters of Waukam County the cost of the restoration efforts that it would take to make that jail into a habitable, humane facility, and, and inform them the cost of that versus the cost of the new jail. I also think that we need to have behavioral, mental health, and drug addiction centers countywide to reduce these low-level crimes that are being placed in jail, that'll reduce the number and the capacity that we have currently in our jail. And I think that we also need to take a hard look at the, the bail bonds. A lot of, I believe, like 45% of the folks sitting in the jail right now just can't afford the bails that is bestowed upon them, and they're just waiting their, their time. And, and we could do better. We need to reduce the capacity, make it humane, and a healthy place to support our workers that are there and the people that are either incarcerated or awaiting incarceration, and I really truly hope that it gets passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ellenboss, your response, please.
I think there is a large group of people that are hoping that this doesn't pass, and I would encourage you to go look at the No for Jails campaign website and understand where they're coming from. They state on their website that they would like to free the incarcerated. They've stood up here and spoke to me at council, told me to F you, flipped me off as they walked away, and they pointed to the back of some of their shirts, and it said, "Free them." Personally, I don't think that that's a solution to the issues that we see in our community. When one pill can kill, we need to look at making possession illegal again. I'm not in favor of anything that would continue the booking restrictions that we see. A lot of the times when you talk to someone who's had addiction issues in the past, it was incarceration that helped them turn their life around. I am all for rehabilitation and for mental health treatment when we can give it to them, but sometimes people need to be in jail. And unfortunately, what we're dealing with now is letting too many people go that should be there, that need to be there. And so if it doesn't pass, we need to look at why it doesn't pass. Why would you vote no? And really contemplate that. And if it doesn't pass, I would look at other facilities where we could place people that needed to be there. Unfortunately, I'm a county council member, and I vote yes or no on budgets and pass ordinances, so this is a wonderful question for the administration.
Thank you. Okay, question number four. And again, this is a bit long, so if you need me to repeat it, ask me. According to the National Coalition to End Homelessness, the top five causes of homelessness in the U.S. are lack of affordable housing, lack of a high enough living wage, domestic violence, medical bankruptcy, and mental illness. Which of these causes would you prioritize to address our homelessness problem, and what actions would you propose? And we'll start with you, candidate Kerschner.
Well, I agree with those, those five top causes of homelessness, and I think where I would focus efforts in Waukam County would be on the affordable housing and possibly the living wage, living wage jobs. And affordable housing, we've got a huge crisis in this community, and it's affecting more than just our homeless population. It's affecting the people that live here right now that come with money to buy a home, and they cannot find a home to buy, which means if that's the case, then people that don't have enough money to buy a home certainly aren't going to find a home to buy. We need to become creative in how we use land use in our community. We can't just open up all of our land to put houses on it. We need to have enough for our farmers and to sustain an agricultural community, to sustain a timber and forestry community, to sustain our natural environments. But we certainly can be more creative in how our cities and towns infill and densify housing so that more people can be living in homes. Living wage job would be my second one, and I have a proven track record of supporting living wage jobs, and will continue to do that when elected to serve my third term.
Thank you. Candidate Ellenboss, your response, please.
Can you go through that list one more time?
The, the top five things?
Yes. And where did it come from?
That I can't tell you.
Okay, give me your top five.
Lack of affordable housing, lack of high enough living wage, domestic violence, medical bankruptcy, and mental illness.
I find that interesting because one of the biggest indicators of whether you're going to grow up in poverty is whether you come from a single-family home or an intact family. I also find it interesting that nowhere is addiction mentioned or drug use, because one thing I do know is that if you are in Waukam County and you are homeless, we have a myriad of opportunities for you to receive help, including friends, neighbors, and community organizations. When people end up not being able to take advantage of those services is when they have an addiction issue and they've burned up all of their lifelines, so to speak. And so I guess I take issue with your list as possibly not being as truthful as it could be, because I think the statistics show that there are other things. I'm not going to say that housing is affordable in Waukam County by any means, but I think your list is incomplete, and I would focus more on mental health services and drug addiction and distribution and all of those types of things to help our homeless, because I think that it's a much deeper issue, a personal issue, than the average price of a home in Waukam County.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Dexter, your response, please.
Yeah, out of those five choices, I think one of my highest priorities would be the living wages. Our wages don't reflect the inflation and the cost of housing, and I personally can attribute my wages and my career and my husband's and my colleagues and my friends, not any of them with good-paying jobs in this area, in this county, in this town, can even afford a mortgage or a home, and they're still renting, and they aspire to be homeowners, like many of us. I also think that mental illness should be prioritized. I think that also encompasses maybe some of our vets and disabled people that are suffering from PTSD. We need to offer some facilities, assistants, counselors, consultants, maybe the ones at the library and in schools to help keep our families and our veterans and our mentally disabled off the streets. But one of my key priorities for my campaign is supporting more economic growth, and we just need better wages to reflect the inflation. The inflation's not going to go away. Housing, yes, we need more houses. There's so many things to address with the housing. That's a whole nother question, but in particular, the wages will help trickle down, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Scanlon, your response, please.
Thank you, and thank you for citing the study earlier when you started the question. I would start with housing, affordable housing. There's another great book on this. It's called Homelessness is a Housing Problem. Ben, I just returned it to the library, so if you want to get it, it's there. And what it shows is that when you look across metro areas across the country, both large and small, the one thing that stands out when it comes to homelessness is the cost of housing. That is what leads to higher levels of homelessness in different areas. So I would focus on that, and I think we're building broad consensus. There are so many folks running for office this year all across this county who are focusing on affordable housing, and I think we have a coalition that's built enough to do a lot of different things. One is looking at the models that we have that are working already in our county, such as the tiny home villages, where we see tiny home villages in Bellingham where people are coming out of camps, off their streets, off their friend's couch, into a tiny home village, becoming stable, and then moving into some of the permanent supportive housing that this county has funded. That model is working. I'd like to expand that. There's a great project, an idea called the Big Lift that I support that a lot of folks have put together. Then there's a lot more we can do. Permitting. We need permitting reform. We need to cut the red tape around housing, both market rate housing and affordable housing. That can help so much. There's some consensus on that. The Business and Commerce Committee of the county has done some work on that. And I like this idea that Barry Buchanan has of taking a stakeholder advisory committee model, just like we did for the jail, doing that for housing, come up with the big consensus, and bring that to a vote.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Ordos, your response, please.
Thank you for that question. What I do appreciate about it is that I think oftentimes when I hear people talk about homelessness, they talk about it from the lens that affects them or they're most passionate about and don't often acknowledge that it's an extremely nuanced issue, and it's very complex. There's not one answer that's going to solve it all. But I think for me, the focus that I take on this is our crisis of fentanyl. I feel like fentanyl is the dark cloud that makes all of these challenges that we experience, homeless being one of them, really difficult to manage and get our arms around. So I feel like if we spent some time focusing on our fentanyl crisis, which we can approach from a lot of different ways, and we need to, and that's one, is making sure that we're getting our arms around it. We're incarcerating the individuals that are trafficking it and bringing it into not only the homeless population, but our community and our schools. We just recently, at the Lumi Nation, lost four of their members to fentanyl overdoses. Earlier this spring, we lost a five-year-old, a 15-year-old, a 17-year-old, and a 29-year-old young man. I feel like if we can focus our energy and resources around getting our arms around that, then we can go through and systematically start to check off these other boxes that contribute to our homelessness issue.
Okay, thank you. So question number five. What modifications, if any, would you suggest to the county's zoning code to create additional affordable housing while balancing the need for agricultural and industrial land? And we'll start with candidate Dexter.
Yeah, I... Sorry, can you repeat that again?
Sure. What modifications, if any, would you suggest to the county's zoning code to create additional affordable housing while balancing the need for agricultural and industrial land?
I definitely think we need to take a hard look at the zoning of Waukam County, and it can definitely be readjusted. There's some really interesting areas. We can encourage more urban growth, where there already is some urban zoning that has been allocated for that. As an environmentalist, I can definitely tell you that also supports the farms, the forests, and the fish, that we should go up and not just out. Let's reduce the amount of sprawl that we're having, but we're going to continue to have population growth. That's undeniable. We're seeing that as we speak, and we need to just look at some areas that definitely need to be rezoned. Retain the farmland that we have, retain the forest that we have. Those are areas of carbon sequestration, and we're definitely going to need that for the future, but we also need that to contribute to the economy and for the ecological function of our county. So yes, I would make many modifications. In specifics, I can't tell you yet, but we need to look at some areas of urban growth, maybe at like Custer or Cole's Corner out on Pole Road, areas that already have some industry and urban growth and continue to go up from there.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Ellen Boss, your response, please.
How much time do I have?
A half minute.
So when I was, I studied at Huxley College of the Environment, and one of the final papers that I wrote was, is planning and zoning helping or hurting our pursuit of protecting 100,000 acres of farmland? And my conclusion was that we were hurting our pursuit. If you look at the average cost of farmland, a 40-acre parcel with water rights is somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000 an acre. And if we're thinking about the next generation of farmer, how in the world are they going to afford $1.2 to $1.5 million to buy a single parcel of farmland in Waukam County when that is our minimum parcel size? I think we can do things to encourage the transition of our aging ag population and being able to transition that land to farmers. I could go on for hours. I wrote an entire paper on it. You should check it out. It's probably online somewhere. I'll move right on down to the next thing I think we should do in the rural area. Right now, our rural element of our comp plan won't let ADUs be built on it, parcels smaller than R10. There's not a lot of meaningful agriculture going on in the rural areas, and if you can meet your setbacks for wells and septic systems, I think we need to allow ADUs on smaller parcels up to and including R2. My time's up, and so I would love to spend the full hour on this portion.
Thank you. Candidate Ordos, your response, please.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What modifications, if any, would you suggest to the county's zoning code to create additional affordable housing while balancing the need for agricultural and industrial land?
So I currently, I mean, I grew up on farmland. I currently live adjacent to farmland, and I think that preserving, I am so sorry, I'm going to stand back here. I do think that, well, we've made a commitment to 100,000 acres, though I don't believe that we're at that 100,000 acres. So I think, 88,000. I do think that we need to make sure that when we're getting creative with increasing our housing, that we don't get creative in the rural communities where we have our agriculture. I do think that some of our cities, there's a lot of things that have been happening in the urban density areas, and so they're finding creative ways, and I think creative ways are great. I don't know if we need to go through and rezone areas that are zoned for agricultural or are heavy or light industrial for more housing, but we do need to come to the table and have conversations about creative ways to do it within our city limits.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Scanlon, your response, please.
Thank you, and I agree with the premise that we do need balance between housing, agriculture, and industrial areas in our county. And one way to do this is through our comprehensive plan update. We'll be planning for the future. It's a great way to put out projections for our needs, our needs in agriculture, our needs in housing, our needs in industry, and then we can plan around that. So one thing I'd like to do is look at the growth that's needed within our cities and within the urban growth areas of the county for housing. We know that there's a state projection that says we need some 30,000 housing units built in our county over the next 20 years. A good chunk of those need to be affordable for working families, so we can project that out and see, based on current zoning, not just in the county, but look at all the cities as well, what can we do within the current zoning? And that can help us to determine what needs to be done to change zoning for housing. I would prefer to see most of the housing go within our cities. In particular, in Bellingham, Bellingham has an opportunity here to comply with new state law that says that cities over 75,000 have to go to four units per lot, six units per lot if two are affordable. Bellingham City Council is debating this. I hope they go even further on that. So that allows us to then protect farmland, protect industrial land in our county. I'd also like to see some collaboration between the county and all the cities on their urban growth areas to encourage housing in the UGAs, and there's a lot of areas where we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Kershner, your response, please.
Like Councilmember Ellen Boss, I probably need more than a minute and a half, but the GMA was put in place to protect our rural areas from urban growth and sprawl, and we need to be doing a better job at putting people in cities and towns and not letting them establish areas that we have in the past, such as Maple Falls and Birch Bay, without becoming incorporated. It costs money to service areas that are rural and then become urban, because the people that live there expect urban-level services. The county is not designed to provide urban-level services, the cities are. Saying all that, I will say we cannot continue to develop in floodplains. That's a disaster, and we've seen that firsthand. And we've got to pay attention to areas like Sumas Eversin, Maple Falls, Birch Bay, where housing may be more affordable so people migrate out to those areas, and then the jobs are in the city of Bellingham, so they migrate back into Bellingham. That's not very economical or environmental, in my opinion, to be having all that transportation, which then costs money to maintain roads, et cetera. Saying all that, I will support Councilmember Ellen Boss's idea of establishing ADUs in some of our smaller lots in the county, 10 acres or smaller, because that's a good way for somebody to take care of their parents.
Okay, thank you. Question number six. Food banks in Waukam County have received federal and local government funding during the pandemic. Do you support county government continuing to fund food banks to feed our hungry? Why or why not? And we'll start with candidate Scanlon. Your response, please.
Thank you. I do think we need local support for our food banks. Our food banks are seeing some of the highest levels of use in their history all across this county. People are suffering. I've worked on food security throughout the course of my career in public policy, both in state and federal government, and doing advocacy work for humanitarian organizations that work domestically and abroad. I would like to see increased local dollars. I know that there has been that for some of our food banks in this county. If anybody was watching what was happening in Washington, D.C. today, where we don't have a Speaker of the House, I don't think we can rely on the federal government over the next year or so to provide that level of support that was there in the past. So it will have to come down on us locally. I think we can continue to advocate in Olympia. So with this next session coming up, I'll be calling on our six legislators who represent Waukam County to see what they can do with some amendments in the budget to cover some of that gap that's going to be needed in our county, and then we can see what's left. What do we need from the county? What do we need from the seven cities to come in and partnership? And also look at our private sector, look at philanthropic needs, and partner with our food banks to help raise those funds that we need in our community.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Ordos, your response, please.
So thank you for that question. You know, the food banks provide a level of security to a lot of families, a lot of those families that have children, and so I do think that it's important that they're supported both at a community level with the, I mean, we've done a really good job of donating to food banks and making sure that we're at least trying to meet the needs. What I'd like to see is partnership with our local farms. We have a lot of really great local farms that contribute, but I'd like to see more of that, as well as finding ways to help people and enable people to be able to grow their own food, too. I think that all of these different pieces can play into making sure that we have better food security. I would support programs that want to help with that funding as well.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Kershner, your response, please.
One of my platform issues this year is supporting children, families, and seniors, seniors especially, because I think they get forgotten in the myriad of problems that the county council and local government faces. Seniors are one of our fastest-growing groups of the homeless, and I would imagine they are probably also using food banks. So I supported using ARPA dollars to fund our food banks and also the plate full that we just did Tuesday, and I think that's a wise decision to make in a crisis that we're currently experiencing. However, I'd like to change the environment so that county government isn't funding food banks and that we go back to the more normal way that food banks were receiving their food and funding, because that would mean that our communities were doing well and better, and people were able to afford housing and food. I met a woman, probably in her 80s, who expressed to me a deep concern for the cost of living in our community. Her rent for a two-bedroom apartment actually was very reasonable. It was $1,200 a month, but on a social security check and living alone, that's not enough money. And her concern was, was she going to be able to afford to buy groceries? So those are the kinds of experiences that people in our community are having, and I would look to using our current revenue sources to fund, continuing funding a food bank, and I could support that.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Ellen Boss, your response, please.
So is your question around, do I support county funding for food banks, or is it more around food security?
The question is, do you support county government continuing to fund food banks to feed the hungry? Why or why not?
Okay, so there's a difference in funding here. We've got general fund funding, which would come from our taxation, or we also have pass-through funding, which is like state grants and federal grants and ARPA funding. I'm not a fan of general fund spending on food banks. I would, like Councilmember Kershner, I would prefer that we could create an environment where people don't need to rely on food banks for their food, but I did support the spending that we just did. I do think that the way the food banks are run in Waukam County is symbiotic to a lot of... to a lot of different goals that we have. I do know that the food banks do buy food from local farmers, and I think that that's helpful to both the farmer and, and the, the folks that are receiving the local nutritious food. And I was in favor of the spending based off of, off of where it came from and what caused the need. One of the biggest issues we have is, is these food deserts, and some of them we've created ourselves with our land use policy. If you look up in Maple Falls, we've created stagnation by, by continuing to plan for zero growth and not allowing zoning for things like grocery stores or restaurants in that community. There's 7,000 to 8,000 people that live up there, yet we expect them to commute all the way to Bellingham to get their food, go out for dinner, and have a job. We need to take that, we need to acknowledge that we've created this and fix it, and we can do that with land use policy.
Hey, thank you. Candidate Dexter, your response, please.
I would firmly support the continuing financial support of the food banks and the ARPA funds as well would be a great place to search for that. But I also think that farmers could be donating more of their local farm-fresh, healthy food to our food banks, and, and maybe our state and federal governments could offer more incentives to those farmers that are supporting the food banks. The food banks in our county are vital and crucial to this community. I have many friends of mine with good jobs that do rely on the food banks to help feed their families, week after week. The, the wages, the cost of housing do not reflect how hard people are working and trying to make it work. People are not making enough money for their, their rent, their mortgage, and the cost of food. Food is rising. I also know that Americans are some of the biggest wasters of food, so let's crack down on this and try to find out with novel solutions and ideas of how to conserve our food and not waste it so much. Support the food banks, support the farmers. These are the people feeding everyone and keeping us still moving. I have committed my entire career, actually, to creating sustainable food as an aquaculturist. This is my passion, and I hope to continue that further. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number seven. We saw wildfires in the county this summer, including one near a residential area of Lake Watcom. What actions do you believe the county should take to be prepared to address wildfires in the future in our county? And we'll start with candidate Kershner.
We've been seeing wildfires affect our county for the last five years. I think the last five summers, we've all experienced a month of smoke. And I will say that I believe that is because we've failed at managing our forests, and as they dry out and catch fire, they burn up, and then they produce smoke that comes down and chokes our residents. So one of the actions that the council has taken is to implement a climate action plan and hire a climate action manager, who is currently working in the Public Works Department to identify what actions the county will take to protect people from the bad air that comes from the smoke. And we'll see, that's still in development right now, probably some sort of shelter or some sort of kit for people. As far as preventing fires and responding to them, we've got one of the, I'm going to call them the best fire services in the country, our, all of our fire districts. We've got Bellingham firefighters and fire districts all throughout the community that are ready to go at a moment's notice. And we also are fortunate to have the resources of the Department of Natural Resources that also can come in and fight fires. And in fact, they did come and fight the fire around Lake Watcom, as promised in the agreement with them, to handle that sort of responsibility.
Thank you. Candidate Dexter, your response, please.
Yeah, we have seen a lot of increase in wildfires happening. I think that we do need to do a better management of our forests, and we need to work closely with DNR. We need to preserve our old-growth forests, our legacy forests. Those trees, those forest stands are, are fairly fire-resistant, drought-tolerant, and pest-resistant. We need to encourage those genetics, and, and also those larger diameter trees have been known to sequester and store carbon the highest. Now, these wildfires we're seeing is, is a direct response from climate change, and I think that it's time for some climate action. Everybody needs to be a participant in this. I, I think that everyone can contribute some aspect in some meaningful way, but we need to be more addressing the issues of these droughts we're suffering, we're having floods, and then we have droughts. This is climate change. We need more climate action. Let's save the trees. Let's not plantation-style cut these forests and be more strategic in how we do that, and working with, in agencies like DNR and the Climate Development Plan as well. We need to work at that, look at that, talk with the stakeholders and the agencies. And also, I think that I would also propose a, a critical map ordinance. We have a lot of them, but none of them are in areas of greatest carbon sequestration, and I think we could do a better job about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ellen Boss, your response, please.
I don't think I could disagree with that statement more. I think that these fires are not a result of climate change. These fires are a result of, if you study the natural system, that is the conclusion of a forest, is fire. And when we stepped in and started actively managing our forests, we started to mess with the natural way. And so as we have walked away from our forests and stopped actively managing them, their conclusion is going to be fire. And so if we don't like that next to our homes or, or in areas where people live, then we have to continue to actively manage them up to and including harvest. I think in the lowlands here, we see a lot of forested areas where cattle are not allowed to graze or other livestock are not allowed to graze because we deem them a critical area, which is creating a giant amount of undergrowth that wouldn't typically be there if you had elk or deer or healthy wild populations. They're not here because we live here. And so managing them with, you know, with our domesticated livestock by grazing some of these areas that, that we're not grazing because they've been deemed critical areas isn't doing us a service. And, and if we could, if we could wrap our heads around that type of science and actively manage what we've disrupted from the natural system and use our, our knowledge and skills to manage the, the landscape, I think we could limit the disruption that these fires are causing.
Thank you. Candidate Ordo, your response, please.
Thank you for that question. You know, I agree with Councilmember Kershner in that we really do need to have good forestry management practices. I think there's a lot of things that we can focus on, and I think that one of the things that isn't often talked about, as these fires are continuing to occur, until we figure out ways to prevent them, we do need to make sure that the people in those communities that are near these fires are prepared. I think oftentimes, we react to a situation rather than be more proactive. We have some great programs, like the Community Emergency Response Training. I would like to see more people in our community take that training so that if we do run into a natural-type disaster, whether it's fire or whether it's flooding, that people are empowered to take action rather than panic. I think we saw that in our flood in 2021. I happen to live right outside the flood area. I was there with my family at the base of my hill as we were helping families out of the bucket of tractors, and there was panic and there was fear. Individuals didn't know how to respond in that type of an emergency, and I think that tells us that as a community, we need to do a better job of preparing community members how to respond.
Hey, thank you. Candidate Scanlon, your response, please.
Thank you. So I think when it comes to the future of wildfires and dealing with smoke, it's something we need to plan ahead for. It's something we're just going to continue to see. It's something we have been seeing. I think when it comes to forest management, looking at selective thinning and some things that can be done to create healthy forests and protect our old-growth and legacy forests in the county, that requires partnership. We have a lot of different landowners across the county, from private landowners, the state, ourselves as the county, and the federal government, and that requires bringing people together on those issues to make sure we're all managing forests in the same way. There's a good opportunity this year for having a good conversation with the state. The DNR commissioner is a open seat next year. A lot of those candidates are going to be traveling our way, trying to get our votes. Let's all talk with them about that and see what they are doing at the DNR level, and that's a great way to push the state on this issue. And then we're just going to have to adapt, or we're going to have to adapt to these changes that we're seeing, these changes that we have been seeing, and looking at some of the health impacts that we see for a lot of folks who don't have great ways of making sure that they have healthy air quality at home. So looking at what are some of the, the programs that are out there from nonprofits, from the state, from the federal government, to help folks to be able to adapt in their homes and in their apartments so that they can breathe healthy air when we do have fires? And then looking at indoor areas for kids. One of my friends is a city council member in East Wenatchee, and one of the things they've done is built some indoor areas for kids in the summer when they know they have fires.
Thank you. Question number eight. Do you believe council members have an obligation to work with all members of the council? And if you do, what strategy would you use to achieve this kind of cooperation? And we'll start with candidate Ellen Boss. Your response, please.
Yeah, unfortunately, the way our system's set up, we're not able to work with other members of the council as much as we would like. Most of our committees are comprised of three people, so two people make a quorum. It's been an issue that, that I think has hindered us from making more progress than we do, and I would like to see it changed. But quorum issues keep us from working with individual council members because of the way our committees are set up. I would probably, I, the only, the only way around that is to have work sessions where we're in, on the, on the, where the public is invited, because privately, it's, it's hard for us to work with individual council members. For example, Councilmember Galloway and I are both on Planning and Development Committee. I think both of us see fairly eye to eye when it comes to the ADU type of regulations that we need fixed in Watcom County, and we need help with on a state level because some of the, the laws that are keeping us from doing it are state-level. But Councilmember Galloway and I, and I can't work closely on this because we would have a quorum issue with our, with our planning committee. So yeah, there are things we could do. Yes, I do think it hinders us, and I think I expressed some ways that we could get around it, but unfortunately, it is the law, and we have to abide by it.
Hey, thank you. Candidate Dexter, your response, please.
Of course, I'd be welcome to work with any council member and anybody on any issue. I think that we need the input of, of everybody, and we need to make sure that when we're discussing certain policies, that the agencies and the stakeholders have also been notified, open dialogue, and, and also make sure that the, the leadership table is open to our indigenous tribes when we're running these policies. I want to ensure that people's voices are heard, and I'm going to listen to everybody. And I think that we can best find common ground and work with each other when we find the commonalities. We all want to work on affordable housing or better wages. Find that common ground and build from there. We can build relationships. We might not always agree, but we can give each other perspective and understanding. So I welcome that. I want to work with everybody.
Hey, thank you. Candidate Scanlon, your response, please.
Thank you. I think this does often occur. A lot of votes are 7-0, and folks agree. There are some times where you see votes that aren't 7-0. I like some of Ben's ideas about looking at what can we do, maybe around work sessions or other ways. If I'm elected and up here next year, this would probably be the first job I ever had had in my career where I can't go out to happy hour with all of my coworkers. But there's other ways that we can do that, potentially looking at some of those changes around.
And you just can't talk business.
Thank you.
Don't think that Councilmember Donovan and I don't have beers.
Thank you. So I think there's some things we can do around work sessions, but I do think we have an obligation to work together. And one of the first things I did as I was exploring my run and then announcing my run was to reach out to every single council member. Councilmember Kershner and I had a great coffee, talking about some healthcare issues we both care about. Councilmember Ellen Boss and I played phone tag for a little while, but saw each other at a parade, and I talked with everybody else to learn from their perspective, to learn from their history in the council, and some ideas that they had about how we might be able to work together. I've been building coalitions my whole career in public policy, and I know that sometimes to get a vote across and to make sure that a policy lasts, you have to work with folks who sometimes you have a different idea on. So that's something I would do, is reach out to others, figure out how it is that we can work together. And in particular, being in the at-large seat, working with the district council members to learn more about the needs in their districts and how we might be able to partner to support voters and residents in their districts.
Thank you. Candidate Ordo, your response, please.
Yes, thank you. I, I don't only think that it is an obligation, but it's incredibly important. I haven't missed a county council meeting in over two years, so I have had the privilege to absorb, to observe all seven in action, bringing forth their ideas from their districts, really shining in their strengths. And I think that you need to do that. When you are representing an entire community, you need to be able to work with anyone and everyone who has the influence or the input that are going to impact our community members. You know, I've been, I was raised here. I spent most of my adult life in Bellingham, and though I understand that coalitions are important and we should be building those, for years, I've been building community. I, I understand the unique challenges that our urban and our rural areas face, and those challenges take different perspectives, they need different resources, and I think that's important. So coalition, community collaboration, whether it's with the council members, whether it's with the stakeholders, whether it's with our tribes, whether it's with everyday people on the street, I think that's incredibly important.
Hey, thank you. Candidate Kershner, your response, please.
Well, the county council's job is to improve the quality of life for all residents in the county and for those that the council member represents. And I've been an effective council member, building far-reaching relationships with community members, building coalitions with stakeholders, and building relationships with council members to the extent the law allows. I think that the way we do that is by being respectful, by listening to people, by participating in healthy debate, and by ultimately working towards the best solution for the most people. And I would say that my record is exemplary in all of those things. That's one of my platform issues, is working together, building trust, and solving complex problems.
Hey, thank you. So question number nine, and this is the last question. The Cherry Point Industrial Zone was established 50 years ago to take advantage of its deep-water port. As the world, national, and local economies evolve, what are your goals for using this area? And what step would you, first step would you take to accomplish your goal? So we'll start with candidate Ordo.
That's a really good question. Cherry Point comes up a lot. Our industrial, heavy and light industrial areas have been a recent topic of conversation. The last county council meeting, there was, put forth a measure for an emergency moratorium on a heavy industrial area. It caused me to do some reflection about that motion, and, you know, when we put, when we zone areas for a particular usage, I think it's important that those areas are used for that, because if, if we decide we're going to zone something and then change it at a whim, or not without, I think the important thing is creating stability. So if we have things zoned for a certain reason, and we change that or we want to change that without the mechanism in place for that to be legitimate, then what we're doing is we're causing an instability for future businesses to want to come here and provide those living wage jobs that we talk about as a priority for our communities. So that's my question to that.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Scanlon, your response, please.
Thank you. So we've, we've been through these discussions over the past few years in the county, the past few decades. past few decades, really. And I support the ultimate end of those discussions, which was the land use ordinance that came through to a 7-0 vote of this council a few years ago. So I would want to maintain that ordinance that we have within the county about the land use in Cherry Point. And when it comes to fossil fuels. Recently, Phillips 66 invited me in to come have a discussion and learn about their plans. So I went to their facility to learn about what they're doing. And I'm always interested in learning about what it is that some of our local companies have planned. And what I said to them is that if they do have any plans that impact tribal treaty rights, they should be talking with Lummy Nation. And that's one of the first things that they should do. And we saw that is what ended up being the endpoint when it came to the Cold Proposal, was that it was treaty rights that won at the end of the day. This is something I work on professionally, on the rights of indigenous peoples, working with indigenous communities all around the world who are impacted by various industrial projects. Some indigenous communities do want projects to occur and want to be part of it. Some do not. And it's all about having that conversation, which leads to consent. So that's what I would advise companies to do, is to reach out to Lummy Nation on all those projects. And then I think we need a broader economic development policy for our county so that we have living wage jobs in our county so that people can continue to afford to live here. So I think the conversation is broader than Cherry Point when it comes to economic development.
Okay, thank you. So Candidate Kirchner, your response, please.
Well, we brought the stakeholders together. That were, that was the people that were working out at the Cherry Point Industrial Area and the environmental group known as Resources in our community. And we put them together, we taped them together, like, you know, you do your kids when they're fighting. I'm just kidding, they weren't fighting. And for about a year and a half, I believe, they negotiated, and they negotiated with the council. And they came up with a set of regulations that people could agree to. Again, nobody got everything they wanted, but people felt like they got enough of what they needed. And those passed. And I bring that story up because the Cherry Point Industrial Area is an area that's all owned by private, private interest. And so the county council only can set land use policy out there. It can't, can't start businesses or create a business. It can certainly try to attract businesses, and I believe that that's important, and we have been doing that. I know Executive Sutu has been working on that. What I want to see out there, my goals would be, we've got two refineries, possibly three refineries. I'm not sure what the status of the third one is at this point. And I'd like to see them be the industry leaders in the clean energy transition. And I know all three of them are doing that. And I want to be supportive of that process because I want our county to have those businesses operating here and continue that process.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Dexter, your response, please.
As it pertains to the Cherry Point Industrial Area, I would first look to Lummy for their guidance because that area is going to greatly impact their treaty rights and their sovereignty. Any land use and water use around their jurisdiction will impact them. And we need to go to them for guidance of how to move forward with that and how they would like to best see fit and how they would like to be a player in that. I also think that economic growth is, it's a must for our coastal community, District Five, and all of Wachem County. We need more jobs, we need more wages for the folks that are living here and the folks that are coming into our county. I think that Wachem County has a really unique standpoint, and we could be the leaders in sustainable industries. We have a lot of footprints that we could utilize and might not involve rezoning areas or involve too much permitting. But I think that we really need to take a hard look at the way our industry is moving towards the future. I also went to Phillips 66 recently and talked with them about their sustainable practices and what they're working towards. And I encourage all those refineries and industries to move towards that. But I definitely think we need to look at some other alternatives. We need to look at energy alternatives and, and just more sustainable industries. That's how it's going to move. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Ellen Bass, your response, please.
I believe the question is, what would I do, right? What would I do in regards to the Cherry Point Industrial Area policy-wise? And I think that my answer would be, I will do what I have continued, that I, I will continue to do what I already have done. I don't think it's, would be a surprise to many to know that when I got done at Huxley College on June 12th of 2001, I started at the BP Cherry Point Refinery on June 13th of 2001. So I have very intimate knowledge of what it takes to operate in an industrial setting as far as being a good neighbor is concerned, as far as environmental compliance is concerned. And in these areas, we are producing things that people need. And that's happening in industry, that's happening in agriculture. I think what we've seen here in Wachem County is that we take this activist approach to things. Well, we can't have industry and clean air, we can't have agriculture and clean water, but the world that I live in, we have both. We got to have both. And so I bring that approach to policy. I was, I was and have been instrumental in ironing out those comprehensive plan amendments to make sure, heard it referred to, that we could be the leader in the clean energy transition. We are the leader in Wachem County. Nobody does it better in the world than we do here in the Cherry Point Industrial Area with Phillips 66 and BP in regards to the oil industry and the transition to renewables. But again, here's another topic I could go on for hours about. I didn't get to all of it, but thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, candidates, you now have the opportunity to make a one-minute closing statement. So Candidate Kirchner, we're going to start with you. Go ahead.
Okay. Four years ago, I was honored to be returned to the county council by an overwhelming 74% of the voters in my district. And I have not taken your trust in me for granted, working diligently to stand up for and honor District Four values, building trust and respect amongst other community members, and even those with differing opinions, and striving for workable solutions. I've been a representative who believes in small, smart, and effective government. I have led with integrity, and I have strived to incorporate conservative principles into the work the council does, even in a minority. Smart government is about bringing people together, building trust, and finding the best solution for the most people. That is what I will continue to do when reelected to be your District Four County Council Representative. You can find more information on my website, it's votecathykirchner.com, or you can just give me a call at 360-220-7535. I answer my own phone. Thank you, League of Women Voters. This is my fifth time, and it was the best.
Thank you. Okay, Candidate Ellen Bass, your response, please. Your closing statement, sorry.
Yeah, four years ago, I was elected by 59% in, in a, I outperformed the expectations, I think, that people had for, for a candidate such as myself. And I like to attribute that to the fact that I think for the fifth district, my experiences in industry, my experiences as the Foreign Bureau President, past Foreign Bureau President, past Cattlemen's Association Vice President, and the fact that I have, my studies are in environmental, natural sciences lends me to represent my district well. I understand water quality, I understand environmental compliance, and I live in a rural area. I'm one of the only council members that actually lives in a rural area. And I've, the North County needs a voice, and I've been honored to be that voice, and I would like to continue to be that voice.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Dexter, your closing statement, please.
My name is Jackie Dexter. I'm a mother, a wife, and a farmer, both of land and sea. I'm a hunter and a fisher. I do woodworking and boatwork. I am, might be one of the most unique candidates that you've ever heard from. Before the age of 18, I had witnessed poverty, trauma, abuse, homelessness, and addiction. I can bring a very fresh perspective to the council. I also work in aquaculture for the Drayton Harbor Oyster Company. I'm in the beginning stages of building my own kelp farm. I understand the difficulties that small businesses and entrepreneurs face in the times of climate action, when we need more action and we're talking about climate change. I'm an environmentalist, but also a farmer, and I understand how to make that balance happen, how to connect both people and the land and the sea. And I think that the tides of change are here for coastal District Five, and I am that tidal wave, a force to be reckoned with. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Scanlon, your closing statement, please.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting the event tonight. These events are so important in our democracy to inform voters about the choices that are on their ballot. My name is John Scanlon, I'm running for Wachem County Council at Large. You'll have your ballot in the mail in a few weeks, October 18th it comes out, it's due back November 7th. Please vote. Please tell your friends to vote. Please tell your family and your neighbors to vote. My whole history, my background, is that I grew up in a family that was very dedicated to community service and public service. My dad served in the Navy, later was the administrator for my school district where I grew up, and was in meetings like this, going to school board meetings every month. My mom was an elected official, being on the library board in my hometown and a town meeting member. I grew up in my grandmother's household where she was a planning commission member. She was a member of the Historical Society. I later went into a career of public service and community service myself, working in state and federal government. Check out my website, electjohnscanlon.com. I'm active in our community, serving on a board for the City of Bellingham that focuses on affordable housing. And please vote on October 18th to November 7th.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Ordos, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. Thank you again, everyone, for the effort that goes into putting these forums on. I invite you to visit my website, hannahforwachem.com, if you care to know a little more detail about me. The things I value most about living here in Wachem County are the experiences that I've had here as a child, a young working adult, a partner, a parent, and a community member. My commitment to this community has grown over time, just as I have grown. This coupled with being raised in the county and living most of my adult life in Bellingham gives me a unique perspective on how to partner with the community, how to collaborate with the stakeholders, and how to create real solutions that serve everyone. My dedication and commitment to public service starts and stays here in Wachem County. I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank all of you candidates for, actually, I want to thank you for caring enough about this incredible community to, to make the time and energy to run for office. Voters can find more information about the candidates online at vote411.org and in your voter pamphlet. Ballots will be mailed October 18th. Your ballot must be postmarked or in a ballot drop box before 8:00 PM on November 7th. Please remember to sign your ballot envelope, and if mailing by postal service, we recommend that you mail it early. Thank you and good night.